February 8th, 2021, meeting of the Watertown Board of Education. At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Board Member Brian Flaherty. Mr. Flaherty?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I ask for a point of personal privilege if I might, please.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board, members of our community. Friday night and Saturday morning, our world stood still for a while here in our town when we heard about the news of Rob Kane's untimely, awful, painful passing. And whether we knew him or not personally, we're better for his having lived, we're better for his having served, whether we voted for him or not, whether we agreed with him or not, we are all thankful for his service and we are better as a community, we are better as a state for his having served. And he served everyone, whether you agreed with him or not, and particularly for this person speaking right now, whether you rooted for the same baseball team or not, mine is in the Bronx and his is apparently there's a baseball team in the state capital of Massachusetts. That aside, we pause and think about Rob and just like Guy Buzano not long ago, just like Tom Lambert, we pause and we mourn his loss. We thank God for the times we had with him, we will miss the times we thought we'd have with him. And we reach out with our hearts and with our hands to his son Aiden, to his daughter Dina, to his beautiful family, comes from a big Irish family like I do, and I gotta tell you something, to see him with his siblings is a sight to behold, to see him talk about his children as many of us as we have is a sight to behold. The two of us thought we were both a little bit nutty for having come out of retirement, one to serve on Charter Revision Commission as he did and me on the board, and we both think we made the right choices and we laughed over it. We had a lot of laughs. He was a very happy man in his life. And I would like to ask, as we remember him fondly, as his family begins just so early in the process of mourning him, that we begin today's meeting with a brief moment of silence and pause in his memory and thankfulness for a good man named Rob Kane. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty. I ask that we all please rise as Mr. Makowski leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Makowski. Mrs. Davidson?
Mr. Makowski?
Here.
Mr. Flaherty?
Here.
Ms. Rinaldi?
Ms. Wilk?
Here.
Ms. Krati?
Here.
Ms. Rosa?
Here.
Ms. Eastman?
Here.
Mr. Malaguti?
Here.
Ms. Lindstrom? Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Davidson. Moving on in the agenda to Item D, minutes. Members all receive the minutes of the regular meeting from January 25th in their packet. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the board approve the January 25th, 2021 regular meeting minutes as presented by Ms. Davidson.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second. Leslie, I'm you.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to Item E, Board of Education Member Vacancy and Nomination. Tonight, we are considering an appointment to the Board of Education to replace a seat that was vacated by the resignation of Ms. Diane Bristol. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move that the board appoint Karen Hosking to the Board of Education to fill the vacancy left by Diane Bristol with a term that expires on November 8th, 2021, as per the Watertown Charter, Section 206.
Thank you, Mr. Makowski. Is there a second?
Very proud to second that nomination and the motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Flaherty. Any discussion? I'd like to add to the discussion. Karen Hosking has spent her professional career entirely devoted to Watertown Public Schools. In 1981, she joined our faculty as a special education teacher and then went on to become a school counselor, serving in both Swift Middle School and Watertown High School in both positions. Throughout Karen's 38 years in Watertown, her involvement with students went way beyond the responsibilities of the school day. Her passion for student advocacy and our community showed in her leadership as a student advisor to peer advocates, Leo Club, peer mediators, Peace Pals, Water Oak Adolescent Heroes, Relay for Life, Prevention Education, and the Junior Variety Show. Karen dedicated most of her educational career to the students of Watertown and Oakville and then retired in June of 2019. She and her husband Bill raised their two children, BJ and Courtney, in town, and they are both very proud graduates of Watertown High School. Ms. Hosking earned her Bachelor's of Science from Southern Connecticut State College in 1977 and her Master's in School Counseling from Southern Connecticut State University in 1986. She is currently a licensed Realtor with Westview Properties. Karen also currently serves on the Watertown Youth Service Bureau, the Juvenile Review Board, the Family Intervention Center in Waterbury, and is a member of the Watertown Oakville Action Team for Community Health. She's a current member of the Midstate Board of Realtors, the Connecticut Association of Realtors, and the National Association of Realtors. Karen's extensive background in student services, thoughtful approach to decision-making, and strong desire to serve our community will surely enhance the board's ability to impact student success in meaningful ways. It is very fitting, and I believe that we are very lucky that she has stepped forward and offered to serve. Is there any further discussion?
Madam Chair?
Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Karen, welcome. I couldn't say it any better than our chair just said, we are so lucky and we are so happy that you're continuing your service to Watertown and Oakville schools, and I certainly look forward to working with you. Congratulations. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? The motion carries. Congratulations, Ms. Hosking, and welcome to the Board of Education. Virtual clapping is taking place. I have been informed by Town Clerk Lisa Dalton that you have indeed taken the oath of office, so I welcome you to join us as a participating board member this evening. Mrs. Hosking?
Thank you, Leslie, and thank you all the board members and all of the town people who are on. I want to say that I hope I can live up to all of the nice things that Leslie said, and Brian, thank you. I have, in fact, thought long and hard about what I can contribute to the board, and I hope that we'll be able to work well together, to be able to move forward, and to continue the great progress that I have seen on both sides of the, as an employee and as a parent. And so, I too, as I started saying from the beginning, look forward to working with each of you and our new superintendent, so thank you so much.
Thank you and welcome. So it's time to get to work. You are official as of now, so welcome to the board. Moving on to Item F, Recognition and Award. Watertown High School Principal Janet Parlato served as the interim superintendent for Watertown Public Schools from December 15th, 2020 through January 29th, 2021. While to most of us that seems like a little bit of a short period of time, I can assure you that it was not. Each day that she worked as her interim really did count as a week, a month, and then some. The amount of daily responsibilities and high priority, high-level decision-making that had to be done under her tenure was remarkable. Dr. Parlato stepped in when our interim, Dr. John Ramos contracted COVID-19 and had to step down a little earlier than anticipated. With one swift move, Dr. Parlato entered the role as interim with the professionalism and capacity that we have come to associate with her work. Her aptly placed sense of urgency and acute understanding of our operations made what could have been a very unstable time much more secure in its footing. At our core as people, we serve as the foundation for many, many things in life, whether we know it or not, and everyone's personal foundation is made up of different things that help us keep steadfast and gives us the courage to do what has to be done. Things like the love from family, the support of friends, our own belief system, personal experiences, our education, the example of our mentors, and our own innate sensibilities. For our school district, many, many good, responsible, hard-working, child-centered people make up our foundation, and Dr. Parlato is surely one of them. The Watertown Board of Education would like to thank Dr. Parlato for her tremendous service and dedication to our district and to our community. She stepped up and served during a difficult time, and her leadership, commitment, and compassion are very much appreciated. Mr. Makowski?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. Being the principal of a high school is tough. Facilities, curriculum, staff, students, parents, that's just to name a few responsibilities. Being a principal of a high school during COVID is really tough. In-school, remote, remote part-time, facilities, sanitizing, virtual learning, curriculum, staff, students, anxiety. Being a principal of a high school during COVID and taking on the role of interim superintendent, are you kidding me? No, I'm not going to rattle off an even longer list of what Dr. Parlato has done. There's not enough time in the week. Somehow, Dr. Parlato stepped in as our interim superintendent, filling the void of an interim superintendent while still running Watertown High School, and she did not miss a beat. She managed all of the above, which are the things that we can see, and so much more behind the scenes. We cannot thank you enough for stepping in during a time like no other and keeping not only the high school but the entire district running. Your determination and leadership are appreciated beyond words. Thank you so much for all you do, Dr. Parlato.
Mrs. Eastman?
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's my honor to say a few words about Dr. Parlato. In my experience in education, I have worked across Connecticut in schools, districts, and administrations, and I can honestly say I have met very few educators like Dr. Parlato. Not many administrators shift their career path to meet the needs of the district rather than vice versa. In our district alone, she has donned many hats and has worn them with a conscientious vision for Watertown and Oakville students and families. She has impacted many lives already and continues to do so with her steadfast commitment to thoughtful teaching and responsible guidance to our educational goals. As a professional, she has proven herself on more than one occasion, but especially this last year, as an objective administrator and compassionate leader. I feel lucky to have collaborated with her on our various projects, and I wouldn't hesitate to work with her again. Her commitment to Watertown is unquestionable, and we are extremely lucky to have such a committed and focused educator among us.
Thank you, Mrs. Eastman. Mrs. Beckity?
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to say a few words about my dear friend, Dr. Parlato. It is truly an honor to do so. I'd like to recognize her for her recently serving in the capacity of interim superintendent. Dr. Parlato consistently demonstrates the perfect mix of innovation, vision, intelligence, skill, common sense, integrity, and a strong work ethic, and let's not forget a sense of humor, which is really needed in this profession. Throughout the years, Dr. Parlato has worn many hats in our district and quite often more than one hat at a time. She has willingly approached any task or challenge asked of her, no matter how big or how small, and has achieved at the highest levels with each one. I know I speak for my fellow administrators when I say that we are all so appreciative of Dr. Parlato and all that she does. I personally feel very fortunate to work with a colleague that is so inspiring to me professionally. However, above all, I am thankful as a parent for all of the countless ways Dr. Parlato has made our district stronger. I wholeheartedly appreciate her dedication to Watertown staff, students, and the community at large. We are very, very lucky to have her in our town. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Beckity. And Dr. Villanueva?
Good evening, everyone. I am going to second all the sentiments that we've just heard tonight of Dr. Parlato. I'm probably one of the luckiest superintendents to be able to transition with somebody who was so willing and able and friendly in approaching me and also transitioning me into the role. One of the roles that is certainly, I think, one most difficult to fill may be that high school principal role, and a superintendent hopes and prays that they have a good high school principal, and I definitely, definitely believe that we do. So thank you and congratulations, Janet, for all that you do for the district.
Thank you. So, Dr. Parlato, on behalf of the board, I would like to share this plaque that we will get to you that reads, Watertown Public Schools Appreciation Award Presented to Dr. Parlato, Interim Superintendent of Schools, in recognition and appreciation for your outstanding dedication and service to Watertown Public Schools dated today, February 8th, 2021. Dr. Parlato?
Well, I don't know if I could follow any of that, so thank you to the speakers and to the entire board for this recognition. I would certainly be remiss if I didn't acknowledge the dedicated staff in this district and our supportive families that make the work of this district possible. So to them, I thank them, and to the board, I thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Parlato. Moving on to Item G in our agenda, report from Student Council Representative Natalie Lindstrom.
Good evening, everyone. John Trumbull. Last week, the amazing John Trumbull PTO purchased items for the administrators to provide a rolling coffee cart for staff. It was so nice for the staff to be appreciated, and they are grateful for their kindness. In kindergarten, students are learning about word part power in phonics to create and read new word families. In first grade, students are working hard to write opinion pieces. They started by sharing a collection with their classmates and writing three reasons why they think, why they like this particular collection. Second graders are learning about geometry and fractions. One student even asked Mrs. Mecca if he could skip recess to work on his math fraction skills. Polk. This week, Polk staff will learn about the next component of Ruler, the Meta Moment. This is a tool that helps all of us press the pause button before reacting when we have a challenging or difficult feeling. Students will first learn to envision their best selves and how that person acts, looks, and sounds. They will then explore how they can take a pause when needed to envision this best self as a strategy to think before responding. Last week, Polk students and staff participated in Super Bowl Can Drive. They casted their vote for the winner of the Super Bowl by placing cans of soup on a table for the Tampa Bay Buccaneers or the Kansas City Chiefs. They culminated the week with a spirit day and doned their favorite sports team gear. All cans of soup were donated to Watertown Food Bank. Beginning in mid-February, all Polk students will take the I-Ready Winter Diagnostic Assessment for both English Language Arts and Math. The diagnostic assessment given twice per year helps to monitor students' progress toward mastering grade-level standards. Students will engage in goal-setting conferences with their teachers based on their performance, reviewing the growth they have made since the fall and setting goals for the remainder of the school year. In addition, teachers will review these goals and student performance data with families at conferences in March. Judson. Judson Student Council has planned some fun events for each Friday in the month of February. It kicked off on Friday, February 15th with Champion Sports Day. February 12th will be Valentine's Color Day, February 19th, Red, White, and Blue Day in honor of President's Day, and Twin Day on February 26th. This will certainly help get through the winter blues. Judson Elementary School students are joining St. Jude Children's Research Hospital in the fight against childhood cancer by participating in a St. Jude Math-A-Thon. This wonderful event helps kids refine their academic skills while teaching them that they have the power to help others. The Math-A-Thon concludes on March 17th, 2021. Judson is preparing for the next I-Ready Diagnostic Testing. The window opens on February 17th until Friday, the 26th. Through analyzing this valuable data, they are able to create our WIN, What I Need groups, and provide interventions and enrichment activities to reach all learners. A huge thank you to Mrs. Chesnick for getting it all up and running for the teachers. Judson third graders have been working really hard on some pretty difficult skills such as perseverance and empathy during their morning meetings. They are also developing a growth mindset. Some things take practice, but through perseverance, we know we will get there. In honor of Black History Month, our fourth graders are learning about African-American mathematicians. They're also beginning to work on creating nonfiction writing pieces. Fifth graders are hard at work and deep into a unit of fractions, multiplying, dividing, adding, and even simplifying fractions. They're also having a lot of fun creating persuasive writing pieces. Swift. School might look a little different this year, but that doesn't deter our students from carrying on with school traditions. Last Friday, members of the Student Council sponsored our yearly celebration of the Super Bowl by encouraging students and staff to show off their favorite sports team wearing team jerseys, sweatshirts, and tees. The Student Council is also sponsoring a Wear Red to support women's heart health in conjunction with St. Valentine's Day. The Student Council meets remotely monthly and is already planning more activities in the next few weeks. February is Black History Month, and at Swift, they have created a Great Americans Wall of Honor. There, they have displayed photographs and inspiring quotations from Black Americans who throughout their words and actions have inspired others and made change happen. Included are leaders such as John Lewis, Shirley Chisholm, Jessie Owens, and Condoleezza Rice. Watertown High School. Watertown High School completed the 2021-22 Program of Studies last week, and administrators presented the new courses to the Curriculum and Instruction Subcommittee of the Board of Education on Wednesday. The high school is hoping to add four new courses, Math for the Trades, Typography 1 and 2, and Advanced Placement Research. The Program of Studies cover was designed by a student in the graphics class with photographs contributed by students in the photography classes. The release of the Program of Studies means that course registration for students is right around the corner. Two WHS students were awarded with the Connecticut Scholastic Art Awards last week. Senior Samantha Veal won in the drawing category for her piece Quarantine, and sophomore Adia Somali won for her photograph, The Lights. WHS is very proud of their student artists. Dr. Parlato was invited to speak at the Rotary Club's February meeting, and she presented information about the high school, including various course offerings, clubs and activities, and athletics. Rotary Club members were impressed with all the offerings and opportunities available at the high school. Athletic practices are in full swing now, and we can't wait for our teams to enter official competition in the upcoming weeks. Also, the WHS Fall/Winter Play is in production to be released in the near future. The second academic semester started last week, so we are officially halfway through the school year. Students have been doing a wonderful job with hybrid learning so far and are prepared for a great second half. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Natalie. Does any member of the board have any questions for Natalie at this time? All right, great job. Seeing none, we will move on to Item H, Superintendent's Recommendation and Report. Dr. Villanueva?
Hi, everyone. So, it was a very productive week. We were working very quickly and diligently on preparing a budget for tomorrow's special meeting of the superintendent's proposed budget, and it's been wonderful to be able to meet with the cabinet and administrators across the district to really look at what our programming needs are and how they connect to our district improvement plan. In addition to that, an update on some weather. You probably received my email at this point that we are anticipating a little bit more inclement weather tomorrow, and what's different about our call tonight is that typically Wednesday would be a remote day, but since we are having a snow day potentially tomorrow, that remote day, we are going to swap in and have students come in hybrid from grade six to 12 on Wednesday so that we try to capture as much in-person learning time as possible. So we're going to take baby steps towards responding to weather on a kind of case-by-case basis, and that's an exciting thing. And another update is that we are getting started, and the process has begun, on expanding our educational programming and really looking at our curriculum now. We're at least starting to think about what that timeline is going to look like to infuse that Watertown history and Native American studies, as well as knowing that the Latino and African-American history course will be providing some information in the coming months. There's a lot of excitement around the recommendation to ultimately expand our educational programming and just around culturally responsive pedagogy in general. So this endeavor that was a recommendation by our mascot committee is actually great because we can now start to put our heads together and see how this work moves forward. So that's pretty much it for updates, and as for the recommendation, we have an appointment below. I recommend that we appoint Ms. Danielle Johnson to the position of paraprofessional, Category 2, for Special Education at John Trumbull Primary School, effective February 17th, 2021, at an hourly rate of $15.17, Step 1 of the paraprofessional contract.
Great. Thank you so much. Does anybody have any questions for the superintendent at this time? Okay, Dr. Villanueva, I just wanted to mention that in the short time that you've been here so far, I've been very appreciative of the communications that you've been sending out to the families, in addition to the board members as well. I know we spoke a lot about it during the interview process of how important that was to not only maintain but to enhance, and, you know, already in such a short time, we've seen an improvement in that area, so I just wanted to thank you for keeping that priority and moving forward in that direction. So thank you very much.
My pleasure. Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, moving on to Item I, our quarterly budget summary. I'm going to turn it right back over to you.
So it is my pleasure to introduce our business manager, Ms. Lisa Jones, who will take us through our quarterly budget for quarter two, and she'll take us right through the items and major categories, and I will be right here to support through if there are any questions that come up during the presentation.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Dr. Villanueva. I am going to be reporting this evening on the second quarter of our Give You a Budget Status Update. The second quarter is going to take us from July 1st, 2020 through the period of December 31st, 2020. Okay, so in this report, the first thing that I would like to bring to your attention is with respect to COVID expenditures. I know during the first quarter reporting that all of our COVID expenditures were reflected in our budget reporting. I have extricated those expenditures out at this point in time, and they are showing at the bottom of your report in the amount of $924,382. That amount actually represents a year-to-date expenditures, meaning that we received invoices and paid for them to date of the original amount of $1,607,827 for COVID-identified expenditures. So we're just slightly past that halfway mark in our actual receipt and payment of invoices to date with respect to COVID. Okay. The other point, as a result of the removing of those COVID expenditures, our variance, our year-to-date variances in our five categories within our budget are showing significantly different numbers. So what I'm going to do for you this evening is take the time to go through each of those categories and highlight the differences in spending and acknowledge changes and give you a brief explanation as to what may have occurred or what we're projecting to occur with respect to those particular lines. Okay. One other thing before I go through them, the individual line items, I will also draw your attention with respect to the two types of COVID funds that we are receiving, reimbursements for the ESTER funding that's been identified as ESTER 1, as well as the Coronavirus Relief Funds. Originally, we were projecting just over $457,000 for both of those grants combined. To date, we have been advised of an increase for those grants, and so we're going to be receiving just and so we're going to be receiving just over five hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred dollars for a total increase of fifty-eight thousand, eight hundred and thirty-nine dollars. So, that is great for our district. We're receiving a little more money than we originally projected, so that's going to help tremendously with some of those costs associated with the pandemic that we are currently living in. Okay, so to go through the actual quarterly report and expenditures of our budget. Okay, so of the forty-six million dollars, five hundred, seventy-eight thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars, the first category that I'm going to speak to is salaries and benefits. Those contractual obligations represent the largest portion of the districts of our budget, as well as our expenditures at seventy-six percent. At this point in time in the second quarter, we're projecting a slight increase in expenditures of just over seventy-eight thousand dollars, representing really a quarter of a percent at twenty-two percent. These expenditures primarily are for the hiring of staff. During the COVID period, we have a number of teachers that are working remotely for health or other related issues that are not able to be in the classroom, and we are hiring these staff to come in and really stay with the class during the time that the teacher's not there, although the teacher is working remotely. Slight changes there with respect to custodians. We are down a custodian staff member, so there's some overtime there as well. But at this time, the projection is really minimal. And that's, again, just at this point in time. As the year goes on, we'll continue to monitor that account and see what difference, whether influxes increases or decreases within that particular line. Okay, so the second category, representing purchased services, just four percent of our budget with an allocated amount of two million, one hundred and seventeen thousand, seven hundred and seventy-four dollars. Again, at this point in time in the second quarter, we're projecting a deficit in this category, excuse me, an increase, a deficit in this category because of increased spending related to end-district tuitions. Okay, the report is just, again, through December the thirtieth. So, what it shows here, different from the first quarter, we really have the opportunity to encumber, expect planned expenses from now through the end of the year for end-district tuitions. Any changes in this amount from now through June thirtieth is going to be directly related to the services at which the students are receiving.
Mrs. Jones, if I may?
Absolutely.
Before we move on, can you talk about what kind of services you are referring to on that line?
Okay, so those are all the services related to end-district tuitions provided by our vendor through Ed Advance for special education students with special needs. So, they can be services ranging from behavioral text to occupational technical speech therapy services of those, of that nature, excuse me.
Thank you for confirming that. Go ahead, Mr. McCoskey.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Jones.
Good evening.
Is, is this increase or deficit as a result of new students that have come into the district? Is there a little bit of light you can shine on why we're trending in this way halfway through the year?
It's a combination of new students as well as change in services that we're providing to students based on their I E Ps.
Great, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. Very good. Okay, so moving on to category three, utilities. Four percent, a small percent of our budget overall, but there is some hope here. As a result, well, at least through December, we've experienced a very warm winter, and as a result, we've seen some savings in our utility costs because of that. And what I did was I actually compared year-to-date expenditures at a point in, at this point in time, in the second quarter for the current year to what we paid last year. And I was able to project, well, show that, a seventeen thousand dollars savings already. As of last week, we've had a lot of sole occurrences, so I don't know how that is going to trend going forward, but the goal is to continue to look at those items and identify any projections as far as savings or if we see any spikes. But we're keeping our fingers crossed and hoping that nothing significantly occurs and that we really got through the worst part of the winter with regard to boilers and snow and all of those type of things that can really create a havoc on a district's budget during the winter season. Okay, so we talked about utilities. Next category. Absolutely.
I'm sorry. I just prefer to do it while we're on the subject instead of after we finish it all. So, on the utilities, I know it's a very small part of it. Could you speak to whether or not we've seen a decrease since we are no longer in the Munson House since September, and we are now in the municipal building?
Okay, so I really, I'm not familiar with the numbers with respect to the Munsons' house. We are sharing the utilities with the town. I have seen some invoices, so our amounts are coming in at very small amounts. But that's something that I can look into and bring additional information to you.
Yeah, I would be interested in some. I would be interested in maybe for the next meeting or to send to the board members. You know, we had old equipment in the old building that required an awful lot of energy to keep it going at the Munson House. And, you know, working in collaboration with the town and moving into the new building, we should be seeing some changes in the cost and the upkeep since we no longer have the Munson House. So, just want to also confirm that the Board of Education is no longer responsible for the, for the bills that the building has been turned over to the town. So, maybe at the next Board of Ed meeting, if you can share that with us, I'd appreciate it.
Absolutely. Just writing some notes. Okay. The next area on our report, contracted services, at the budget amount of five million, six hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, three hundred and thirty-seven dollars, representing twelve percent of our budget, which is the second largest portion of the budget. Right now, again, showing a savings here, projecting a service, a savings, excuse me, for the second quarter of seventy-five hundred dollars and just under thirteen percent. This projection is based on the savings primarily due to transportation. What you're seeing in your detailed report is the savings for transportation as a result of the district's not having sports to the extent that we would have otherwise had during a non-COVID year. So, there's a brief savings there. What you're not seeing is we're not paying a hundred percent of our transportation costs anytime the district employs a remote learning day. So, as a result of that, we know that for two weeks in the month of November, believe, and the month of December, as well as sometime in January where we were fully remote and transportation was not being provided. We have not received the invoices that reflect what that savings is, but we have entered into a M O U with the transportation company, and we will not be paying a hundred percent of those invoices. So, at some point, either in the third or fourth quarter, basing on when the vendor per student provides us that breakdown of transportation, you're going to see, we'll be able to realize some cost savings there as well.
Through the chair.
If I, go ahead, Mr. McCoskey.
Oh, sorry. Ms. Jones, when do you anticipate receiving that from First Student?
I'm not sure. They have to provide, the M O U states that they have to provide us a more detailed analysis of what the expenditures are. So, as of this point in time, the first one, we would have received an adjustment in our billing for November. We have not received the bill yet, so I don't know if they're at this time, and I can inquire with Michelle at First Student to see if they're going to wait until the end and, and capture all of the remote days at one time or if they're, because it's more detailed than their regular building, that may take additional time.
Yeah, I would, I would like to ask that you do inquire. Being halfway through the fiscal year, I think it's important for us to know at minimum how we're trending and, and what that looks like. Because as we, you know, as you look at your projections for the second half of the year, you know, transportation is a huge bucket, and variations in that can, can absolutely have an impact on the rest of the budget.
Absolutely.
And thank you, Mr. McCoskey. And I might add just a point of information for the Board of Education members who weren't part of the discussions related to the transportation contract. As you recall, in two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty, we had renegotiated the bus contract outside of the original multi-year contract with First Student to make up for the fact that the conditions are much different with COVID, and our transportation needs have changed in both needing additional staff on buses, but also needing less transportation. So, there is a percentage that was worked out with a memorandum of, of agreement where we would be paying a, a certain percentage of the expenses related to First Student operating their buses and employing all of their bus drivers, but not related to other specific items, such as some of their overhead costs and things like that, and rental of park spaces for their buses and very different things that, that were pulled out in that contract as a result of an executive order that the governor released. So, it'll be interesting to see how much savings we reap from First Student, not only because of the less amount of in-person learning, but also because of that M O U, M O A that was agreed upon with them. So, be curious to see that as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Truly noted. Okay, all right. And our last, but not least, category, supplies and equipment, and actually, and the comparison of the overall budget at just two percent, it is the smallest portion of the pie. So, of that one million, twelve thousand, six hundred and sixty dollars, we are projecting to come in on budget at this time, not have any increases or decreases. Year-to-date expenditures, nine hundred and seventy-one thousand. So, there is some additional monies that can be spent through the year. And again, the remote learning days are also impacting the using, the usage of supplies in this line and it trending down with respect to that. But the good thing is those are what we call non-perishables, and there's supplies that will be able to be used next year as well. So, any questions regarding through the five categories that I've highlighted thus far? Any other questions?
Sure, I'll take a stab at the supplies one real quick. So, we, when we budgeted last year for supplies for this year, we budgeted for what we would use this year. And I would imagine that what we have is not going to be, we'll, we'll still need more supplies next year, and that what's, the dollar amounts that are budgeted here will not be used for next year's supplies, correct? I mean, unless there's something left over.
So, the, the dollar amount? Can you repeat your question, Chair Cardy, please? I apologize.
That's okay. I'm just responding to the statement that you made that was related to having money left over in that line. That money has all been budgeted for, for supplies and equipment, whether it's cleaning products or equipment needed in that department, not to be carried over next year, but, but things that we needed in this year's budget, correct?
Oh, absolutely. When I refer to money left over, I'm just saying money that's in the budget that we haven't spent at this point in time. Not that it will be there for the future, though. Correct. Yes, absolutely.
Chair Cardy and Ms. Jones, if I could just add one more piece to that puzzle as well. With our COVID expenses that are not part of the line items that have been extracted at this point, still with quite, I don't know what the exact hundred thousand dollars, hundreds of thousands of dollars that still are outstanding. There, we are currently on a budget freeze in the district at this time. And so, some of those not expended funds in instructional supplies is because we are at this time moving with caution so that we are able to balance out at the end of the year. And so, sometimes there may have been moments where our building leaders and our buildings may have wanted to spend something, but because they know that we are in a freeze, they are unable to do that at this time. Of course, it's, if it's an emergency, comes up to Central Office, to my office, and we make a determination on how to move forward. But I did think that it was very important that we just kept it very cautious moving towards the end of the year.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Villanueva. So, one final item that I would like to bring to your attention. From the beginning of the school year, we've been anticipating an excess cost reimbursement just at about nine hundred thousand dollars, and that's the amount that's showing on the bottom of the report. The good news is that based on our increased spending above with the purchase service or our increased spending for tuition specifically, our excess cost reimbursement is going to increase as well. So, you'll make note of the new amount that I'm showing, the one million, one hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar reimbursement that the district's going to receive in excess cost. And so, we're actually anticipating on receiving that first payment. It comes in two payments, sometime the end of this month, early March, and the second payment being in May. So, that increase of three hundred thousand dollars will also be used, again, to offset those tuition costs that the district spends in. Okay?
Any questions for Dr. Villanueva or Mrs. Jones?
Not at this time.
Okay.
Okay, thank you all for your attention.
Thank you very much. Okay, Dr. Villanueva, I'm assuming that we're continuing to share where we are in the COVID-nineteen-related costs that Mrs. Jones broke out for us again. I'm assuming we're keeping the town manager, Suzapone, the finance director, up to date on where we are with those expenditures?
Absolutely, and we're keeping, I'm keeping a close eye, as is Ms. Jones, on just the types of grants that are cropping up here and there, if there are any. Because at one point, we will go into partnership with the town to see if any of those grants are viable for us to jointly enter and see if we can recoup anything. So, even a dollar returned back will, will help our bottom line. And so, making sure that we keep an eye on that and in communication with Ms. Appone is really important.
Thank you. I appreciate that. All right, closing up on the quarterly budget summary, unless any other board members have any questions or comments. Okay, thank you. Moving on to item J, presentation of the two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two Program of Studies for Watertown High School. Dr. Villanueva?
So, this is the exciting part of the night where our team from Watertown High School gets to showcase the wonderful pieces of educational experiences and opportunities that show up in the Program of Studies. Under Dr. Parlato's leadership and with a collaborative effort with Ms. Cody and Mr. Holgriff and all of the students there, this is a true showcase of how we are moving our district improvement plan forward, offering more choices to our students so that they can really engage in 21st century learning. So, I will turn it over to Dr. Parlato and her team to tell us what good things are in this year's Program of Studies.
Thank you very much. I'm going to share my screen, and as the superintendent mentioned, I have some special guests with me this evening. So, we'll have some additional voices with our slides. So, let me share the screen so that we can all see what I'm talking about. So, the Program of Studies is essentially a course catalog. And what that does is it provides families and students with information about each of the courses at the high school across all of our departments. As Natalie mentioned in her report, our, our cover this year was designed by students. And so, we always strive to do that, to have students get real-world experience with the design of something that's going to be published for thousands of people, essentially. So, the students in the photography class contributed the two photographs, and a student in the graphics class designed the cover and the way that it's set up. And it's actually so beautiful this year, looking like a corkboard. So, that's a, a great. And it's actually so beautiful this year, looking like a corkboard, so that's a great example of student work from the high school. So any program of studies has several goals. So you always want to develop your strong core curriculum requirements. And any high school essentially you go to in the nation, you will see under letter A there. So you'll always have three years of English, you'll always have an Algebra I, a geometry, an Algebra II, an Integrated Science, Biology, Chemistry. World History, Civics, and US History. Those are core curriculum requirements that you'll find just about anywhere. The same thing is true about legislative mandates. So you'll see in some of the things that we talk about this evening, that we added things to the Program of Studies over the last several years. In response to legislation. And then the crown jewel of any program of studies are the course opportunities that you provide. So the one way that we normally say it in school is that they're called electives, but elective does not mean optional. Elective means having many choices. In those electives, you'll see plenty of career connections. And because we are a comprehensive high school, we try to expose students to a broad range of topics. So they have choices of many different fields and many different ideas to try out. So there was some important legislation that had, it's actually passed six years ago now and it keeps getting revised. So Connecticut General Statute ten dash two twenty-one A, which is also known as high school reform legislation. Beginning with the class of twenty twenty-three, who are the current sophomores. There was a change in the amount of health education that they needed, so they need one point zero credit instead of point five. Those students in the class of twenty twenty-three must earn twenty-five credits to earn a high school diploma versus before this law was passed. It used to be twenty-one credits. And then students who take high school courses in middle school, such as in our district Algebra I, Spanish I, and French I. Earn that high school credit for those courses taken in middle school. So they essentially begin high school with some high school credits under their belt, having earned them in middle school. So you can see over the years how both state legislation and increasing requirements have changed what is needed for graduation. So way back to the class of two thousand and fifteen, the number of required credits was twenty-two. And then you can see how those have increased over time. And so for Watertown High School, for class of twenty twenty and above, we require twenty-six credits, so that's above the state legislation. In the same timeframe, however, while credits were increasing, the high school lost four point two FTE. That means full-time equivalent positions across content areas. So for example, we lost one point zero tech ed teacher, one point zero art, one point zero business teacher. Point eight med careers teacher and one point four science. So fortunately, we were able to regain last year one point two FTE, family consumer science teacher and. A point two social studies. But while credit requirements are increasing, we still have some ground to make up with some of the positions that were lost over time. And those were primarily either budget cuts or positions that were not filled when someone retired. But we're very proud of the courses that we added last year, and so I wanted to remind everyone what those were. In for this twenty twenty-one school year that we're currently living in. And so you can see, we added two point two additional staff, but we're able to add all these choices for our students. So foods, baking and pastry arts, which we'll hear about in just a moment. Horticulture, academic reading and academic math, which provides student support with skill development. Something you'll hear about in a moment, AP Seminar. We added college writing, one of the state mandates, Health and Wellness Two, and we also added a music technology course. So those are great in terms of the selections that students have and the opportunities that they have. And we're able to add those nine courses and adding two point two staff on top of that. So we're gonna hear from some individuals now. We're going to begin with somebody talking about AP Seminar. Those people are, Ms. Nicole Lewis is our library media specialist and she also teaches the AP Seminar class. And she has along with her Jack Rinaldi and he's going to talk about his experience in the AP Seminar class. And so I'm gonna ask them to begin.
So I'll begin by giving everyone just a quick overview of the course before I turn it over to Jack. This is a research course and it's centered around the acronym QUEST. Question and exploration of complex topics and issues. Understanding and analyzing arguments, perspectives and evaluating the author's claims in line of reasoning. Evaluating multiple perspectives, synthesizing ideas to lead to new understandings. And then team transform and transmit. Teaming allows one to combine personal strengths and talents with those of others to reach a common goal. Transformation and growth come from thoughtful reflection. And transmitting requires the adaptation of one's message based on the audience and context. So this course is unique in the sense that instead of deriving a one through five final score solely from an end-of-course exam. The score is derived from two performance tasks as well. Performance Task One is a team project. Groups select a debatable research topic and then each member researches the topic from one of the eight college board-defined lenses. Which could be historical, scientific, social, futuristic, ethical, for example. And then the group synthesizes their research findings into one multimedia presentation. That culminates with a recommended solution for addressing the issue based on their research. Jack can tell you a little bit about his group's performance task one when I turn it over to him in a minute. But Performance Task Two is an individual research project anchored in a packet of college board-provided stimulus materials. Each year, the packet has a different theme. Last year's theme was happiness, this year's theme is sports. And students most closely read the materials and develop a research question that is anchored in the materials of the provided stimulus packet. And then they conduct research to answer their question, write a paper and prepare a presentation in oral defense. And then the end-of-course exam is two parts. Part A asks students to read an excerpt to determine the author's main idea and analyze their line of reasoning. So it's essentially like a mini timed Performance Task One. And then end-of-course exam part B is a mini stimulus packet with four sources. And the students have to identify the unifying theme and provide evidence to support this theme, so it's like a mini Performance Task Two. So I'm gonna turn it over to Jack now and he can tell you a little bit about the course from a student's perspective.
So from my perspective, AP Seminar has definitely been different than a regular high school course due to the fact that instead of focusing. On one subject area, it tends to focus on a variety of various different skills through research, reading. As well as analysis, source analysis and author analysis skills. And so the purpose of learning these skills for the students is to allow them to become more accommodated to. More scholarly or academic sources in their future careers, especially in college and other AP courses. And so obtaining these skills, they're able to use them in their academic repertoires in order to improve their academic performances across the board for all subjects. So far, one of the most beneficial aspects of this course, in my opinion, is that it is more focused on. Sort of like the students' intentions to where the projects incorporated within the course are not necessarily set in stone. These students have the freedom of choosing their own topics to research as well as choosing their own lenses to research those topics through. And so if I was to give an example on my group for our Performance Task One, we got to choose our own topics and so we decided to choose disaster relief. Because we thought that is, that is a major issue affecting the world today, especially with the changing climate and things like that. And so our Performance Task basically consists of all of us researching disaster relief through different lens. We have like a historical and political lens. I'm doing the scientific lens, or excuse me, I'm doing the. Sorry, yeah, I'm doing scientific lens and one of my other partners is doing the. Sort of like philosophical lens through the mental effects of disaster relief. And it has been an interesting course so far this year. And I think just that that ability to choose your own path and research your own topic. Is what makes the course very interesting and engaging because although the work is rigorous and requires a lot of hard work and thinking. You know, the the ability to choose your own topic allows it to be enjoyable. So that's, that's basically what I have to say on the course. And I think the general consensus consensus among all of my peers and the others too in seeing the course is relatively the same thing. We've all found it to be very enjoyable and useful for further improving our academic careers.
So I can't see anyone, so I'm gonna thank Ms. Lewis and Jack for that excellent overview of that class. You'll hear me say it a little bit later, but I'll say it again, that we had to apply to be accepted to offer AP Seminar. So we're proud that we were accepted in order to to be able to put that in our Program of Studies. Next, we're going to hear about baking and pastry arts and foods. We have the teacher of those courses, Ms. Mara Cotronno with us tonight. And so Ms. Cotronno, if you would speak a little bit about those courses that we have now.
Yeah, hi, good evening. I am so thrilled to share with you some of the highlights about the courses I teach. In the foods course, students will learn how to carefully and successfully handle a knife. By the time they finish the semester, they'll know how to dice, mince, chop and julienne. While using all these skills to prepare a variety of dishes. On the menu for the year, this year in foods, we've got soup, sauces, eggs. And comfort foods like homemade mac and cheese. Cooking techniques like sautéing and baking will be introduced along with some employability skills. This year at Thanksgiving time, we made homemade gravy and compared both the taste and the ingredients to the jarred version. Lessons like these are a natural way to teach about nutrition and the differences between made from scratch and processed foods. In baking and pastry arts, there are two main focus areas that I start with. The functions of the seven basic baking ingredients and proper measuring skills. Students will learn during these labs, when any of these magnificent seven, as they're known, are missing. The product doesn't always come out the way it should. On the menu for baking this year are quickbreads, pies, cookies, yeast doughs and cake decorating. So I'd like to share just a brief exchange I recently had with one of my students during our bagel lab. She told me that she made the bagels at home and her family could not believe that she made them. And I wish I had a picture of her smile to share with you. So please know that there are so many who are very thankful that you've reinstated these courses at Watertown High School. And I thank you on behalf of all present and future students for allowing them the opportunity to learn these much-needed. Life and employability skills. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Cotronno. So tho- those are the courses that we added last year. And we wanted you to hear from the teachers of those courses and one of our students. So you can see the actual impact of that work upon our school, which is so great and so fun and. And really enriches students' experiences at the high school. So the next few slides will talk about some of our new course choices for the two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And so Ms. Chelsea Guerrero of the math department is here with us and she is thrilled and excited to talk about math for the trades. So I'm going to turn it over to her.
Hi, everyone. I'm, like Janet said, I'm so excited to talk to you about this class. I created this course to inspire students to get involved in the trades. My dad's an electrician and he's expressed to me how much. He's seen students not get interested in the trades. There's a lack of interest from high schoolers to go into the trades. I have researched over the last couple of months of different trades. And I'm currently in contact with professionals from different trades. Currently, I'm working with a chairperson from a group of training coordinators and directors from a local union. One of my goals for this course is to have tradesmen come to the classroom and actually speak to the students and get them excited about the trades. Have them talk about their own experience where they see the math in the actual trades. Another goal is to give students a hands-on experience because the trades are hands-on. So giving them that experience right in the classroom is gonna help them so much if they do choose the trades. There is a test to be an apprentice for the trades, which I have. I have copies of certain trades tests so that I can prepare them correctly to take them with the confidence. Simply put, math for the trades is the algebra skills and the geometry skills through the lens of different kinds of trades.
Through the chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Mikowski.
Ms. Guerrero, sorry, this is anecdotal, but I just wanna thank you for doing this. You know, our dear friend Tom Lambert, who is on the, served the board for many years. I can tell you right now, he's smiling down on you for doing this, so thank you.
Thank you.
So thank you very much, Ms. Guerrero. You can tell we're really enthusiastic about our new courses. Especially the ones we've added over the last two and three years. So math through the trades is our first one. We have two new art courses, typography one and typography two. And at the bottom of the slide, you can see examples of typography. And so this will give students an opportunity to gain some exposure with not only hand-on graphic design techniques. But also computer graphic design of letters and lettering. And so fonts are a big deal out in the world and and students have a ton of experience with looking at a lot of different fonts and all the. And all the computer work that they do, and so this is an opportunity to learn how to create those. So we're offering typography one and two, the second part, which is more advanced and goes into more depth in creating those fonts. I won't say much about this because Mrs. Lewis and Jack did a great job. So we did offer this year AP Seminar. The second piece of that in year two is called AP Research and said that goes into more depth of what is done in AP Seminar. So essentially, students create a research project, they have to follow certain research methodology to complete it. They have to be able to synthesize information, do a review of the literature. And then they have to write a twenty to forty-page paper, do a performance or exhibit related to the topic. And then have an oral defense, it's like a mini dissertation. So this is rigorous and excellent coursework for students who are interested in that kind of thinking. About a topic of interest or a topic of their passion and then researching about it. We have in the budget for the upcoming year, an additional technology education teacher. And so that would be a restoration of a position that was caught in the past. And so if we're fortunate enough to gain the new technology education teacher. Their sample of courses listed here are what that person could teach. Everything from manufacturing technology to coding to additional computer aided drafting. We offer something called Exploring Technology, and so we would be able to expand those sections. Introduction to Engineering, Residential Construction, Design and Technology. Electronics and Automated Systems, and then Facility and Property Maintenance. And so you can see in all of those courses, there's a very clear and direct career connection to what students may do in the future. So thank you for listening to our new courses. I'm gonna unshare so you can see me again. Or I can see you, rather. And if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them. Do board members have any questions?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
I don't have any questions. I just wanna, Dr. Parlato, I wanna thank you and your entire team for, you know, really. Looking outside the box on, you know, what education really means these day, these days. You know, it's, it's important, as you all know, that we prepare our students for life, life after high school, regardless of what, what path they take. And being able to introduce them into this variety of coursework, you know, really, you know, maybe helps. Take some stress off of them of of trying to figure out what do I wanna be when I grow up or what path do I wanna take? So, you know, we, we really appreciate all the time and effort into not only, you know, thinking about what would be valuable. But but then digging in and figuring out what that curriculum should look like and and how to develop in a way to get the most out of the students. And and allow them to get the most out of the the coursework, so thank you.
Thank you for saying that. You reminded me to, of saying one thing is, the beauty of the comprehensive high school. Is that in a way, we don't allow students to specialize too early. We want them to have a broad range of experiences across courses, across content areas, as many different subjects as they can try out. Because they don't know what they're going to discover until they try a course that they might not have thought they'd ever like. And so that's, you know, one of my favorite parts of of this time of the year when we present the program of studies is it it really showcases what a comprehensive high school can do and be.
One of the things, if I may follow up, one of the things that got me thinking when when Jack was was speaking is, you know, is there a way, a a future item to look at? How do we take kind of the structure of an AP Seminar for and expand it out, maybe not quite as rigorous as an AP? I just think having so many bits and pieces that that get introduced and into into a student's mind, you know, A, it's it's more exciting for them. It's not just, you know, the regurgitation of coursework. So there might be an opportunity to have a more engaging type class atmosphere, you know, looking at the structure of of AP Seminar. So it's just just food for thought.
So sure, so schools of the future will focus on the following things. They'll focus on student choice, which AP Seminar has. They'll focus on student choice. Students not only having choices, but using their voice to explain that. And then looking across content areas, what we call interdisciplinary thinking. So that is the that is the direction of secondary schools as we move forward, for sure.
Love it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mikowski. And Dr. Pallato, if I, oh, go right ahead.
I'm sorry, Leslie. Just wanted to just name what Rob said and just say that was uplifting and inspiring. And I just wanted to thank you and your entire team, all the administrators, staff, teachers and students. That was a great presentation. Thank you very much, all of you. Thank you for your hard work and continued dedication to our town.
Thank you on behalf of the my co-presenters. We appreciate that.
I know we've we've missed seeing staff and students in this virtual world. So it's really great to have them back in the board meetings, being able to to present in their own in their own voice and and exemplify what what you're doing with the school. I just wanted to mention kind of what Rob was speaking of. You know, it's really exciting to see the ideas within the district improvement plan and the strategic planning about student-centered learning and all of that coming to fruition through things like the AP Seminar and and increasing our technology and our trades education. I mean, it's just, it's really happening. It's taken a a long time to get here and it's really exciting. So thank you and and thank you to everybody who presented this evening. Dr. Villanueva, do you have anything to add in regards to the program of studies before we move forward?
Just one closing piece, and Mr. Mikowski said something, you know, what do you want to be when you grow up? And when I was listening to Jack speak about his experience in AP Research, it kind of changed the question a little bit. It wasn't what do you want to be when you grow up? But how are you going to give back to what's happening in the world when you grow up? And the fact that you guys are focusing in on that disaster relief as as kind of your focus area, it really shows like agency and advocacy to give back to the community. So it's wonderful to hear.
Thank you, and thank you, everybody. Moving on to item K in our agenda, the 21-22 Capital Improvement Plan priorities. Shoot it right back over to you, Dr. Villanueva.
Wonderful, thank you. So we've visited this topic a couple of times. And so we've been trying to crystallize it just a little bit more so that we know where our dollars are being spent. So our charge was to come back with a more detailed line item, understanding of what the overall large expenses would be. So at this time, including all and possible contingencies to any of our projects, the total capital improvement plan total expenses would come to $11,241,372.10. So I can go through each project for this particular memo in your packet this week. It is prioritized by the highest importance. Again, all of the projects are important, but again, we just prioritized it in terms of most urgent. So the Watertown High School roof replacement with contingency included would come out to $4,531,300. The roof replacement on its own is the $4,100,100. And the $21,500 would be for the engineering firm to basically take a look and assess what engineering equipment would be needed. Mr. Faiela has already received some information back and we have come to determine that they will not need cranes for this project, nor some of the other large equipment that will be needed to do some of the lifting on the roof. And so that contingency that we've built in really should be sufficient to take care of that entire project. The next project that we have there is the artificial turf and track replacement with an overall total cost there. And so when we break it down, ultimately, there's cost for removing the existing turf, removal of the existing underlayment, as well as the actual astroturf that they'll put on top, the new underlayment, and then a contingency as well. And the same thing with the high school track and base. The track and base overall cost of $410,000 will include the removal and putting it back in as well. And there was, we factored in the cost of, basically, they gave us an an estimate of $155 per ton of true and level for conditions that may be unforeseen when you rip up the actual track, as we put that in there. And all of the quotes, of course, are attached behind. For John Trumbull Primary School, the low slope cost of the $400,000. So this one actually does not break out into more specific line items as we encounter, we inquired further. It basically gives a description of what that $400,000 entails, and that's all part of that total cost there in that paragraph. For the HVAC system at John Trumbull, basically, we are going with option one. And it would ultimately be to have two new smaller heating on top of the to replace the rooftop units that are there to upgrade that duck work. And we did include a contingency of 10% there because there is possibility for structural engineering and some additional steelwork that may happen during that replacement. For the Swift Middle School roof maintenance, this again, maintenance is important so that we can, it's very expensive to replace a roof. So the more we ma- we maintain it, the longer we can keep it. And so just for the $25,000 there, it includes the inspection, making sure that there are cleaning and repairing areas, and also engaging in infrared thermal scan to basically tell us if there's any wet insulation, because that's the part when roofs get scary. Okay, the next one is the John Trumbull Primary Flooring Replacement. And this one as well, the cost of $500,000 was based on the overall square footage of the John Trumbull area. And this also allows for the phased-in repairing of school of the school floor because there are sectioned off places in John Trumbull so they can do it in pieces. And and so that was the overall cost there. The Swift Middle School Artificial Turf Replacement, it's broken down there again for the removal of the existing turf, the removal of the existing underlayment, and and then ultimately the turf that would go on top and a contingency built in just in case the ground, once you we start to tear things up, there's something under there that we weren't expecting. For these John Trumbull Primary School Slope Shingle Section, this is basically replacing those shingles that are falling off. And it's $2,300,000. And we did put in a contingency of 10%. And this is basically based on the square footage of the roof space and the replacement of those shingles, which is great, is we do get a 30-year, I don't think it's a warranty, but we get shingles that are not the right word, not guaranteed, but they're supposed to last 30 years. And then the last part here is just to note that the contingency was not just an arbitrary number of 10%. We did do our due diligence and looked around to neighboring districts as well as asked our vendors what would be an appropriate contingency based on the scope of the project. And they said that 10% would be an accurate and correct figure to include there in all of those projects. So if you have any.
Yes, if I may. So there's an extensive amount of exclusions in the turf replacement from Astroturf Corporation. Those are above and beyond contingencies, obviously, I'm assuming, since their quote doesn't include those items. You know, repair of the fencing, the poles, additional testing, the demolition work, replacement of existing concrete. So how do we account for the items that we could potentially need that are in the exclusions?
So, Mr. Faiela, I'll actually turn that over to you. From my understanding and debate, the way we've based the, I'm sorry for the phone. The way we've based the overall cost is for the actual just turf replacement. And anything else beyond it, we would then absorb the cost if they needed to be replaced. But I will turn it over to Mr. Faiela to explain.
And that and that's correct. I think we we spoke earlier about this very thing. So like when you begin to peel back the onion, obviously, you're not sure what you're going to find when you start digging into the ground. And that hence the 10% contingency. When they're talking about posts, they're talking about when they go to get machinery into the site, we might have to have a couple of the fence posts in certain areas ripped out to get the machinery into the space. It it's minimal cost to have like an eagle fence, for instance, to come out and take those sections out for us to do our work and then place them back, if you're talking about fencing. And I I think the concrete you're mentioning is probably the concrete, the posts themselves that are set into concrete. Yeah, they're they're not, they're not big-ticket items at all.
Good. Thank you for clarifying.
Okay.
Do board members have any questions on this? I appreciate the work that's been done behind the scenes since the last time that we talked about this as a board, setting the priorities in order, just to review, to make sure we're all on the same page. This evening, what we're looking to do is, once we've had all of our questions answered, is to move forward in a motion to allow the district to present these to the town and then to start to collaborate with the town on whether or not these items can be bonded in whole or in pieces and leave that in the hands of Dr. Villanueva until the town determines how they want to move forward with funding. So does anybody have any questions in relation to the priorities that are on this memo?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Mikowski.
No questions. I just want to share, you know, I fully support the action to move this forward. You know, we're talking about our second biggest asset in the town beyond our our kids is our infrastructure. It's our schools. And, you know, it's 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 mission critical that we start addressing these items now, only because if we delay, then it it only prolongs, you know, the the instances of wear and tear, breakdown, et cetera. So, you know, I wholeheartedly support, you know, taking the step of moving this through the board and and allowing us to bring it to the town council for further consideration for for looking forward so we can start addressing some of these projects.
Thank you, Mr. Mikowski. Any other board members have any questions or comments in regards to this? Just want to make sure everybody's comfortable with the recommendations before we move forward.
Through the chair, I don't have any questions on this. I just wanted to, you know, thank everyone for taking the time to for a more detailed report. I do appreciate that. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilson. I I second that for sure. Any other questions or comments? Okay, great. Thank you, Mr. Faiela, and thank you very much, Madam Superintendent. We really appreciate you getting back to us with this level of detail. It's extremely helpful and I I also echo Mr. Mikowski. I fully support moving forward with this to the town council. Okay, moving on. Thank you. Moving on in the agenda, item L. It's our first round of public participation. If you would like to address the board, please state your name, address, and topic of your discussion. And I will go slowly in between if there are more than one or two, so that people have a time to unmute themselves. Any members of the public wish to address the board this evening?
Hi, good evening.
Go ahead.
My name is Bethany Campbell. I live at 64 Buckweed Hill Road in Watertown. And I just wanted to talk about our programs and the budget. I'm speaking tonight not only as a parent of three children in the Watertown Public Schools, but also as an educator. My husband and I both come from families of educators and have been in this profession for a combined total of 32 years' experience. We are advocates for public education and proud Watertown residents. To date, our three daughters have had the most wonderful experiences and outstanding teachers whose efforts and passion during remote learning this year consistently remain nothing short of admirable. Curriculum Coordinator Mrs. Beckity supported the thoughts I initially shared with her. And tonight, I hope, your support will be added with clarity and resolve. With the upcoming budget, our administration and board members must put the needs of our students first. Last year, our budget removed six PAR professionals, even though PARs help students of all levels. My experiences have proven that having a PAR in my classroom allows teachers to better differentiate and challenge students of all levels. Expanding rather than shrinking our programs should be a valued, non-negotiable necessity. Foreign language should be offered for all middle schoolers, not just eighth grade. The value of enrichment programs offered during the regular school hours is undeniable. How great would it be if our middle school students had the option of taking an elective math course? Or what about a creative writing class? A gifted and talented program throughout the district wouldn't require hiring additional teachers, but offering differentials to current teachers is a budget-wise option. All students deserve a challenge and an opportunity to take their education further. There is an abundance of research confirming that rigor works and challenging students improves motivation and performance. Our schools serve as a reflection of our citizens, so of course, they should embody success. Our curriculum, vertical alignment, and benchmark assessments need to be addressed when looking at future budgets. This pandemic should be a reminder to not delay in bigger thinking. Throughout the course of this pandemic, it's the people who thought and moved ahead with bold innovation who made positive impacts on others. We love our town and our schools. Our students have missed out on so many opportunities over the past year. To take away anything else would be detrimental to their growth. We want nothing more than to see children of all levels being pushed to their fullest potential and have the same opportunities that other districts offer. It's time to expect more from so many residents willing to give and generously help. Residents need pride, not budget cuts. And if they do happen, please ensure that they do not directly affect student learning. With gratitude for where we are and hope for reaching higher, thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Mrs. Campbell. Appreciate it. Any other members of the board wish, any other members of the public wish to address the board this evening? Please state your name and address. Okay, we will have another opportunity for public participation shortly in the meeting. Moving on to item M, Communications. On behalf of Board Secretary Kathy Rinaldi, who couldn't be with us here this evening, I have one letter to enter into the record, received February 8th from Fawn Arshat, President of the National Congress of American Indians. The letter formally commends the Board of Education for its recent decision to retire the Watertown High School Indians name and mascot, thanks us for our leadership on this issue on behalf of Indian country, and shares their desire with us to educate the public on ways to show respect for tribal nations and peoples. Board members can read the entire letter in the electronic version that if not, hasn't been sent to you today. It will be later on this evening. Moving on to item N, Committee Reports. On behalf of Mrs. Rinaldi, there is nothing from curriculum and instruction at this time, except to say we are thrilled with the program of studies. Moving on to Policy and Labor Chair, Mrs. Wilk.
Yes, Madam Chair. I just wanted to report that the Board of Negotiations Team is working on the nurses', custodial, and secretary's contracts. There's it.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Wilk. And Mr. Mikowski, Chair of Budget and Finance.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to thank Ms. Jones and Dr. Villanueva on the budget update through Q2 given this evening. Just a reminder that tomorrow at 7:30 PM, we will be having a special board meeting where Dr. Villanueva and her team will be presenting the superintendent's budget. And then we are anticipating a Board of Education vote on the proposed budget on February 22nd. Friendly reminder to all of our parents, community members. You know, a- as Mrs. Campbell just stated, our budget is is mission critical to to what we do in the district. And we encourage everyone to attend, get involved, listen, give your feedback, educate your neighbors, your parents, et cetera. That's how we engage a community and that's how. educate your neighbors, your parents, et cetera. Um, that's how we engage a community, and that's how um we continue to give uh Dr. Villanueva, Dr. Parlato, the entire staff of uh Watertown Public Schools, the tools um and support that they need to support our kids. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mikowski. Um, just a one quick note, um, the Budget and Finance Special Budget Meeting tomorrow is at six thirty PM. Moving on to Facilities, PBC, and Operations, um, on behalf of that department, um, I have no report other than uh what was shared um this earlier this evening. And back to you, Mr. Mikowski, for governance and community engagement.
No report at this time.
Thank you. Moving on to item O, there is no report from me this evening, and we'll go right to Action Items, Adoption of Items to Be Approved by Consent. We did number one earlier in the evening when we appointed Ms. Hoskins to the Board of Education. Item two is Consideration of the Approval of the Proposed Two Thousand and Twenty-One, Twenty-Two Program of Studies for the High School. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that the board approve of the Twenty-Two One, Twenty-Two Two Program of Studies for Watertown High School as presented.
Thank you, Mrs. Eastman. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Item three, Consideration of the Approval to Add Dr. Villanueva, Superintendent of Schools, to the Watertown Public Schools Child Nutrition Program Account. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that the board approve of adding Dr. Allison Villanueva, Superintendent of Schools, to the Watertown Public Schools Child Nutrition Program Account effective February ninth, twenty-twenty-one.
Thank you, Mrs. Rosa. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Moving on to item four, Consideration to Approve of the Capital Improvement Plan. Do we have a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that the board approve of bringing the capital improvement projects to the town, Watertown Town Council for approval as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Mikowski. Is there a second?
I second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, motion carries. Moving on to item Q. Do board members have any future agenda items they'd like to suggest or comments they'd like to make at this time? Hearing none, I'll move on to item R, our last round of public participation. If any members of the public wish to address the board this evening, please state your name, address, and topic of discussion. Hearing none, we'll move to item S, Executive Session. Is there a motion?
Yes, Madam Chair. I move that the board go into executive session for the purpose of discussion concerning attorney-client communication regarding the board's legal authority to replace the school district's mascot. Attending executive session will be Dr. Villanueva, Lazekrati, Ramatowski, Brian Flaherty, Karen Hosking, Josephine Rosa, Cindy Eastman, Jason Malaguti, Jessica Ritter, Taylor Bischoff, and myself, Janelle Wilk.
Thank you, Mrs. Wilk. Do we have a second?
I second it.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. The board will take a very brief break while we wait for the public um to remove themselves from the meeting, and then we will go right into executive session from there.